Hello, everyone, and welcome to tonight's school committee meeting. Olivia, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so this meeting is the first meeting that we're having since town meeting and the town elections. And we have our newest member, Jen Wilson, who was sworn in earlier this week. It was a close election, so there is some recount going on, but we're gonna go ahead. And with you duly sworn in, and Daryl as well, who were the two winners of the election, we're gonna go ahead and go through our reorganization before we go into our regular business. So at this point, we're gonna dissolve the current committee, or it is dissolved. The superintendent is gonna take over the meeting for a few minutes while we go through the nomination process for the officers. And Mr. Clenchey.
No, Mike, we won't be outta here by eight. I can read your mind.
I knew this was a power trip.
At this time, I'll accept nominations for a position of chair.
I'd like to nominate Mike Fontanella for position of chairman.
Second.
Any other nominations? All those in favor of electing Mike Fontanella as chairman of the school committee?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations, Mr. Fontanella.
Thank you.
Boy, that was quick.
The power trip is over now.
Last five seconds. All right, I'm gonna go through and do the rest of them.
Yes.
Open nominations for vice chairman.
Make a motion to nominate Michael Mazzoni Esquire for vice chair.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of Mike Mazzoni?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
This is second.
And then we need any nominations for secretary?
I'll nominate Daryl Baker if he accepts to be secretary.
Second.
Second? Are there any other nominations for secretary? Hearing none, all those in favor of Daryl?
Aye.
Opposed? None, good, all right. All right, the other thing that we have to do is the subcommittee appointments. Somebody have a list of them, I'm getting mine up. All right, so the first one at the top of the list is the Bradford Sampson Scholarship Trust. This is a committee that's active in the month of May when they're doling out the scholarships for graduating seniors. It's a little bit of a, not a big deal, it's only a very brief assignment each year. Right now, it's Matt Hunt. Matt, do you wanna keep it? Does anybody else wanna jump on it?
Those of you that don't mind me, I'm fine keeping it. If anybody wants it.
I would do it if you wanted to get rid of it.
You can take it, I'm gonna, I got a few other things I'm gonna do.
All right, is that good with you guys?
I'll take that.
Okay, all right. The second one is the permanent school planning committee.
Not necessary.
Yeah, at the moment, yeah. Right now, I don't think we need it, right there, we've been talking about this, but there's nothing, nothing imminent that we're gonna think about building or adding onto the existing buildings. So we'll leave this one dormant for the time being. Evaluation, this is for the superintendent's evaluation each year. Typically, we have the secretary deal with this, and Daryl's been kinda doing it, so do you wanna keep?
Yeah, I can continue doing it.
Okay, all right. All right, reorganization study committee, oh, sorry, regionalization study committee. We're really not doing anything with this, right? There's no, so we have you on there, and if there's something that happens, then we'll all talk about it and decide who we want to have help, the superintendent with that.
I think you're two in one career is enough.
The permanent municipal building committee, Daryl is currently, this is our representative on that committee, this is kind of a big deal, there's extra meetings each month as part of this responsibility, and we always have smallish projects going on, and then, of course, we have alumni field going on as well right now. Are you good with it?
Yeah, I'd like to keep that for probably one more year.
Okay, anybody else have a problem with that? I didn't think so.
Thank you, Daryl.
All right, the technology committee, updates the district's technology plan, makes recommendations for development implementation of the technology program. The current assignment was Alex, who is no longer with us. Is there anybody that wants to?
Sounds ominous.
No longer on the school committee, sorry. Sorry. I talked to him today, he's fine.
I saw him yesterday, I'll have him on.
Is there anybody that wants to glom onto this one?
I'll take it if you want.
All right, so we're gonna get you something, don't worry. All right, Matt will take that one. Legislation, sign keeping up to date on pending legislation, working with the superintendent, keeping the school committee informed on legislative matters?
I can even do that.
Even though you're no longer down in Beacon Hill? All right.
Still make it work, I keep my ear to the ground still.
All right, the policy committee, so we all work on the policies, but one member typically has been tasked with kinda organizing which policies we're gonna discuss each year and stuff. Do you wanna take a look, touch shot at this one, Jen?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I think it would be a good idea, it would obviously give you a chance to go through the policy manual, which, you know, give you a lot of information of what's going on. Daryl was an excellent resource for us for a couple of years, and I'm sure he'd be happy to go over what his, you know, process was for that.
Sure.
And that'll get us going. Old to bills and payroll, this is somebody that needs to just stop up at the office and sign the payroll and accounts payable. I'm currently doing it, I'm around town, I'm happy to keep doing it, so.
I will, please do.
Liaison with town government, working with whatever boards we have to work with, primarily the pin column, the board of selectmen, currently doing it. Typically, we have the chair be this person if he or she is willing to do it, and I'm fine to continue doing it. Negotiations, we are currently in the midst of a negotiation with the Littleton Educated Association, Mike Mazzoni and I are on it right now, so I think it's important that we just keep continuity there, so we'll just leave that the way it is for the time being. Representative to community services, park and rec department, Matt, that's currently yours.
I'll keep it if, unless anyone wants it.
Safety and security, Mike, that's currently you.
Yeah, I'll keep that.
All right, good. CPAC, our liaison with the parent group.
I've done CPAC, I know if Jen wants to.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind doing CPAC.
All right, Jen, we'll put you on that one, thank you. And then, school start time, this is something Alex was working on, we haven't really done any work on it lately, but do you wanna take a look at that one too, Jen? Is that something that's interesting for you?
Yeah, it does, I guess I don't really know.
I mean, I guess the idea would be, you know, working with the administration and kinda coming up with any ideas that might be presented to the rest of us, you know, for us to look at. The idea would be that it's a tricky thing to think about because there's a lot of moving pieces, and there's good ideas that just may not be feasible.
Is this in relation to, like, a later start time for the high school specifically?
Could be, could be anything.
Or just any, okay.
Yeah, could be anything. I think that's the one we've been primarily thinking about, but the problem is, is that that might mean a change for another building, depending on what kinda plan we came up with.
Okay.
And the idea, I think, is that because there are so many ideas that might be non-starters, it's good to have somebody on a committee basis, working with the administration, to filter that out, so that we're only debating the ones that, you know, conceivably, exactly, can get done.
Sure.
Did I miss a bunch of something?
I did.
Blasted right past that one. All right, so that had been Alex and I, I would definitely like to keep my hand in there.
I wouldn't mind working on budget also.
Okay.
Anyone?
All right. Here's the thing, right, we post all those meetings, because, you know, we want the public to know when we're meeting on the budget, we do it at the superintendent's office. Matt, you're probably, you're not gonna be able to do mornings, but you could do afternoons, right? So we'll come up with a schedule, anybody that wants to be involved, then just can, you know, the meetings are posted, come to the meeting, so. It'll probably be three, what time do you back in Littleton?
I can meet back by three.
All right, so 3:30, 4 o'clock, we'll probably be looking to meet, and we'll work out the calendar, we don't have to worry about it right now.
I guess just the one thing we gotta be careful of is we don't wanna quorum at any subcommittee meeting.
Oh, we can't do that?
Because if the three of them discuss, it becomes a vote of the.
You can.
We gotta be very careful about how to quorum at a subcommittee meeting.
You just don't wanna be doing, you don't wanna have any business being conducted and completed.
Well, that's the danger of the third person participating in the discussion. It becomes a.
I guess I was under the impression, as long as we posted.
But it becomes a binding decision of the committee also, because it's a full quorum of the committee.
It's not an open meeting law issue, that is fine, 'cause it's posted, but to Daryl's point, it's essentially the full committee meeting, you know, for all intents and purposes.
You just have to make sure that you're not making any motions.
Anyway, it's just one thing they caution during the.
All right, well, let's think about that, then.
Yeah.
Do you have interest in that, Jen?
It's something that would interest me, but.
Okay, then I think maybe what we can do is maybe let's think about alternating representation and avoiding the quorum, because there's days when I'm not, I can't be there in a given meeting, and we either cancel the meeting, like, if Alex or I couldn't be there, we either decided, well, if the one person was gonna be there, we'll carry on, or we cancel it, but if we've got backup, then we can continue to move forward, so.
I'd be comfortable with backup, but I just, like I said, I caution against having a quorum.
All right, that's good. All right, are we good with all that? Everybody's happy-ish?
Ish.
All right, now we'll get back into kinda our regular business, we have a consent agenda, minutes from April 27, 2017, old to bills and payroll.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda, is that right?
Second.
All right, Jen, you would probably abstain on this one, because you weren't at that meeting as a member, but all the rest of us that are, any discussion? All good with the, I mean, the minutes?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. All right, this is one of our two spots at the meeting for, from interested citizens, we'll do one now and one at the end, are there any citizens that wanna talk about anything in front of the school committee? All right, saying none. Go right into recognition, we have our student representative report, Olivia?
Hi, so as the year comes to an end, so do all the clubs and activities, so I am dressed as I am today, because currently at the high school is the Latin Clubs' Roman banquet, so we dress in Roman attire, we eat Italian food, and play games inspired by different myths. Also going on, May 19th at Russell Street is the relay recess, but May 19th into the 20th is relay for life, so you will see a lot of high schoolers over in the alumni field-ish area. Shiger Lane has, on May 22nd, has their kindergarten slash transitional field day, which my sister's very excited for, she brought home the slip today, and she's like, "I get to play outside all day." On the 23rd, grade two has their concert at the high school at seven, the 30th, first grade has their field day, and the 31st, second grade has their field day. Again, these were my favorite things, or some of my favorite things, and I miss that the high school doesn't do them. The middle school, if you're in the mood for some theater, there are four productions of Charlotte's Web this weekend, tickets are available at the door and mkticks.com. And then the other big thing at the middle school was science fair, was April 28th. So it's basically all the seventh and eighth graders, and then some sixth graders creating amazing projects, and I was reading some of them, and they're all way more creative than Mindmark. But Mikey Taylor, Acacia, Napa, sorry, Sujah, I'm gonna butcher it, Napa Romig, Katie Aslan, Virginia Shay, and Varshini Soon Durison are going to the Massachusetts State and State Science and Engineering Fair on June 1st, based on how they scored at our school level. Also, the end of the year means testing, so a lot of students are dreading MCAS, which for a lot of us is next week and then the week after. At the high school academic awards night is the 18th, and the last day for our seniors is the 19th.
All right, great, thank you.
There's one thing coming up, right, 'cause I got a report to me, was June 10th, they're doing the first annual Littleton Track Town Meet as a fundraiser, which I think they're looking for participants, and.
I like how you said participants instead.
Well, participants, athletes.
Semantics.
Potato, totto.
Potato.
And how far is the rudder?
No, it's actually track meet.
Track meet.
Like an actual meet.
I think they're running like.
Does that mean they're doing, like, all the different events? You got your, like, hundred, two hundred.
One mile, eight hundred, four hundred, and a four-by-four relay, you sign up, I think it's $10 an event, $20 for the relay team, for fundraiser for the track team, so I might sign up to run a mile.
I might sponsor, I would be like those.
Sponsor.
All right, great, thank you, Daryl.
Yep.
All right, we've been giving out our excellence in teaching awards, I believe it's Russell Streets.
It is, this is our third award that we're giving this year. Tonight's recipient exemplifies the core values of the district, and uses best and next practices, and individualizes and personalizes instruction for all students, and provides a meaningful classroom environment that engages all students in the learning process. This particular teacher, in my travels for a number of years, every year I've had somebody come up to me, a recent graduate, actually, I've had a few graduates that actually have their own family now come up to me and comment on this teacher in terms of how impactful this individual was on their life. So that's pretty special, to have people that have graduated from our district and remember their days at Russell Street School, and make a point of mentioning this teacher to me. The teachers that receive this award also are utilizing best practices and research, they take risks in the classroom, they're not afraid to try new things, and we encourage that in our district, and most of the time they succeed, sometimes they have a little bump along the way, but in order to extend your toolbox or teaching repertoire, you need to take risks, and people that receive this award are quite adept at doing that. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Principal Vezzillo to introduce this year's recipient from Russell Street School. Thanks.
Thanks for having us. One of the things, this is the third year of the excellence in teaching award, and one of the things I say when I announce the winner to our staff at Russell Street is it's extremely difficult as an administrator to pick the winner of this award, because there's so many deserving teachers in Littleton and at Russell Street, but I think folks will agree that Heather Love, the reputation that she carries in town, well-known, as the superintendent mentioned, we hear about the lives that she's touched regularly, so I do have a little write-up that I'd like to share. Heather Love's a talented educator with a passion for helping children grow, not only academically, but also socially and emotionally. Her ability to build a classroom community is second to none, each year she works with the students in her class to learn and grow as citizens individually and as a group. Almost every year, a former student wants to come back and volunteer with Heather, this is a testament to the lasting relationships that she builds with others. Ms. Love is one of those people who makes everyone feel special, she takes the time to smile and stop and engage with students, colleagues, and parents, she's genuine and thoughtful, Heather has a reputation of going above and beyond to support children and families, she's a, she is dedicated to doing all she can to be a positive influence and resource for her students and parents. Heather is active outside her classroom as well, she's written many successful LEF grants, including bringing Potato Hill poetry to grade three and working on an outdoor classroom for students, she attends and volunteers at many RSS events, including the basket raffle, basketball game, and bingo night, Heather has advised clubs in the past, and has been an LEA building rep. And let's also not forget that she's the only person in the building that knows how to change the laminator. Heather's dedication, compassion, and student advocacy make her invaluable to the children and families of Littleton, and her colleagues at Russell Street School, and for these reasons, it's our honor to recognize Heather Love as one of this year's winners of the Littleton Public Schools Excellence in Teaching Award.
I'd like to say thank you very much, it means a lot to me, and when I think back to first starting at Russell Street, I was talking to a teacher, and she said that she had been teaching for five years, and I remember thinking, whoa, five years, that's so long, and now I'm coming to the end of my 17th year, and it's like, wow, where has the time gone? And oftentimes, I'll run into parents of former students, and they'll say, oh, you know, my child is, yeah, they've been out of college for five years, and I think to myself, are my students really that old already? And they are. But, you know, I feel lucky to have had the opportunity to work in a community like Littleton, the job has been, it's been so meaningful to me as a part of my identity, and it's brought me a lot of joy, and I, the support that I've felt from students and parents of students, and my Russell Street family, and my own family that I love so much, is, you know, I just, I feel fortunate, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess they wanna sit down.
Oh, okay.
Cheryl volunteered.
Oh, okay. I already did. Hi.
Congratulations. Nice to see you guys.
Good to see you, Joe.
Thank you. No, you got, that's.
We got that covered.
Between two thorns?
That's definitely true.
Okay.
That was lots of warning.
Paula Donahue's the only one who hit the Fontanella trifecta, but Heather got two of them. Very, as a family, we know exactly what you guys are talking about. All right, the next item we have on the recognition is, we did go through town meeting, was that a week ago, two, 10 days ago?
Ten days, at least.
But as always, we would like to say thank you to the community for supporting the overall town budget, but especially the school department's budget, we did a lot of work with the finance committee and the board of selectmen to get ready for town meeting, and it, the budget was passed quite easily, there wasn't a lot of debate about it, so obviously the community supported it, we appreciate that, and we look forward to continuing to work with those committees as we move forward. You know, we're still waiting for the state budget process to go finish, it's got quite a ways to go, but as we've talked about at multiple meetings, you know, we made the budget work, even though our projections for local aid are to be level funded, again, and I think that's the thing that we keep coming back towards, it's exceedingly difficult year by year to continue to meet our obligations as a town and as a school district, when all we can count on is level funding from the state. In Littleton, I think we've been very fortunate, there was a article in the Globe, there's another community that's much bigger community, but they're looking at massive layoffs, like 150 teachers, 300 staff overall, 150 teachers, so, you know, we've been able to avoid that, you know, up till now, so that's a tribute to the town for supporting us and the boards that work together to make that happen, but there is looming pressure from the fact that we are level funded at the state level, and something that we will continue to keep an eye on as we move right into the next budgeting cycle. All right, LHS art show?
This week, we were treated to an excellent art show and spring concert, unbelievable turnout, and artwork was incredible, and our kids performed extremely well, so kudos to our students and staff who were involved in the concert and the art show. It's really nice to have an evening to have our students have the chance to showcase their work, and showcase their musical abilities and talents. We're very fortunate in this community, our students bring such multiple talents to the table, and when we see them in the high school setting after they've been honing their skill for a number of years, it's just really, really a treat, and really a proud moment for all of us to be able to see what they have accomplished, so thanks again to everybody who came out, and a special thanks to the students and staff who were involved in that event. PTA, staff appreciation luncheon, every year, our PTA provides a staff appreciation luncheon to all of our schools, including Central Office, and Central Office, we had a delicious lunch, and I also retweeted out a number of pictures from the various schools, so thanks again to our PTA for making our day a very special day. And that's all that I have, please look at the end of the school committee agenda for upcoming events, we have a lot of things happening this time of year, every time May rolls around, something's going on every night, it seems, and the whole school is done.
machines, similar to this work, you know, 3D printers, you know, laser cutters, they all run with something called the General Language, or G-code. We have an Arduino back there, you know, in our electronics box. It's closed up now, but that's our processes, is G-code. And what it basically tells stepper motors, you know, like, how far to go in each direction in each axis. So, this is essentially just a mill that's controlled by a computer telling it where to cut stuff, so.
So, one of the big problems when we were looking into making a CNC machine was that they're very expensive to make. All of the parts are pretty specialized, and so what Sujith and I found was a guide where most of the parts were either 3D-printed or laser-cut, both of which the school has. So, what we did is we spent about two months in the winter, both cutting and printing stuff in our spare time, and this wasn't as easy as we thought it was going to be, which, in hindsight, was great because we learned a lot of how to fix our existing machines and how to use them properly. So, it was a learning curve along the way, which was great.
And if you don't know, 3D printers break down frequently and always.
They're messy.
Yeah, so we had to, before we, like, you know, kind of took over the club, I don't know, most of you probably know about this, but last year, our engineering lab was kind of flooded over, so a lot of the machines were kind of like, you know, in disarray. So, we had to, like, before we could start 3D-printing a lot of these things, we had to, you know, put together most of these machines, take them apart, you know, fix any clogs or anything. So, along the way, you know, we kind of figured out how most of these machines work on the interior. And recently, we also had to go fix our laser cutter. What happened was one of the lenses on the laser cutter actually shattered because dust particles, basically, what a laser cutter does is it focuses a laser, you know, onto an object, and once it hits its focal point, the laser cuts material pretty much. But what happened was a dust particle got on the mirror, and once the laser hit the dust particle, the particle just heated up and the glass shattered. So, we had to go, you know, we found this dealer on China, on Amazon, from China. We, like, fixed the laser cutter for cheap from parts from China, so we had to put that together. So, you know, a lot of, we had to fix a lot of other machines before we could put this one together.
So, we have a little demo for you before we talk about these, I guess. So, we don't have a drill bit attached to this because it would be loud and messy, and yeah. But we can, we can move the carriage around. What we're going to show you is, at the beginning of every time you cut something, you do something called the homing cycle, which basically sends the machine, its carriage, back to a predefined point every time. So, you can start from the same point, define it as the origin. So, we're going to do that, and you'll see it move around a little bit. And essentially, what it's trying to do is, there's little switches on each of its moving axes, and it's waiting to hit the end of its travel distance. And once it hits the end, it says, I'll stop, and that's your, that's our origin.
This way so the camera can see the machine.
So, from there, you can upload a file, and you can start cutting. Some of the things we did to modify from the original plan that was given to us online was we added the emergency stop button, half because it seemed like a good idea, and half because it just looks cool. A big red button. We are also, we added a speed controller for the motor, the spindle motor which drives the drill bit, so you can define how fast you want that to go depending on what material you're cutting. And a final thing that we're, yeah, some other thing we'd like to add is a safety cover, which would hoop over the entire machine just to keep any particles from flying out, and make it a lot easier for other members of the school to use without safety equipment themselves. And, oh yeah, there's, we have another problem where some of our wires within the little control box, they interfere a little bit, so we're trying to isolate that. Sometimes it causes issues with the way the motors run. And, oh, there you go. Final thing was, that we want to add is, you can add a vacuum, which, in addition to sucking away all the excess material, you can use it to actually hold down the object that you're cutting. It sort of sucks from the bottom and holds your wood or plastic or whatever on your build plate without having clamps, which can sort of get in the way of the router. Any questions?
I have questions, but I'll leave that with Matt.
So, how much, if you were to buy one of these on the market, how much would they cost the engineering company?
Kits generally run, what we've seen on Amazon is you can buy kits, like, just the, so like, the frame and the, yeah, the frame, and those will be like maybe $400 or $500. And then, in addition to that, you need to buy the electronics, which can run you another couple hundred, but by cutting everything and printing everything ourselves, most everything, this entire project, I think, was like $350.
I'm impressed.
Yeah.
That's pretty awesome. I really wish you had brought the drill bit, though.
I don't have any questions, but I sound like a broken record every, every time you guys come in to do this stuff, that it just blows, it blows my mind that you guys are capable of doing this stuff. I mean, I can't put together Ikea furniture. So, this is remarkable to me, and I'm so glad.
Just they can make Ikea furniture.
I know, and I've heard of this before. A lot of our colleges have started doing this thing too, where they've got, I was visiting one of our, one of the community colleges, and they had a makers' lab or whatever they're called. And they were using 3D printers to 3D-print more 3D printers. And that's like very similar to what you guys have done here, is a lot of that stuff sounds like, so virtually everything there, except for obviously like the metal of the wires and stuff and the motor, had you guys created through other machines and stuff that you have.
Pretty much, yeah.
I'm just so happy for you guys that this stuff exists in Littleton.
It's great.
And you guys are.
Absolutely.
No, this is really cool. Yeah, next you got to build a water jet.
I think that's a great project.
What kinds of things do you expect to build from this?
Basically, grays a lot of stuff. You know, you can mill out little tiny parts that you can put together to other things. You know, we've been looking at, you can also do like little, like, board game, board game pieces and stuff too. Like, you know, we saw a project, like, the tan pieces and stuff that you can mill out in this thing, so it's pretty, it's pretty neat.
What it allows you to do that the 3D printer and the laser cutter can't do is, the 3D printer is limited to plastic, which, a lot of times, doesn't look great, and it's brittle, and it doesn't hold up well. And the laser cutter can only do surface engraving, and you can either, you know, there's surface engrave, or you can cut all the way through. So, what this does is you can cut other materials, and then you also have depth control of what you cut, so a little more freedom.
I have one very important question. So, you guys said you could put a file in here, and then you tell this thing what to make. Can it decide what it wants to make on its own? I'm looking for no. I'm holding for no.
That's what the emergency stop is for.
What if it disables its own emergency stop, then where we're at?
Skynet.
This is, you guys laugh, but this is stuff that's being written about and discussed, and you guys will talk about this in college.
I can't keep enough of them in there.
All right, guys, thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Always a great.
I'm going to miss these guys coming off to college. Congratulations on your addition to college.
You guys are studying art history, I assume?
Yeah. No, we're all going to.
Pre-law.
Pre-law, yeah.
Where'd you say you're going?
I'm going to UMass Amherst.
Cornell.
Great.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
I'd be remiss not to mention Dr. Hogan. Runs out of the room. I knew I was going to do that. Has been a real pioneer in project-based learning. It's just amazing what he's brought to the high school in terms of application of concepts. And I'll never get the time, I walked down to his room, and, I can't remember, was it a 357 engine that you were taking apart? And he had an engine, 357, and they were rebuilding it, and it was just fascinating what he does with his students, and our students become so proficient at taking risks again and fixing these things. So, you know, kudos to Dr. Hogan for moving us forward, and it's been contagious. We have a lot of teachers that are now barking upon that journey. These students too are involved in dual enrollment classes, and Sujith, for example, has taken a number of university classes in the past two years. That's correct. And last year, you were in that engineering class, doing a presentation, and Dr. Hogan, I believe, is, is it three dual enrollment classes that you're?
Yeah, well, three physics college-level classes this coming year, if kids want to take advantage of it.
Right, right.
I have three syllabi approved by Middlesex.
So, just how many dual enrollment courses do you have?
I took one last year and three this year.
That's excellent.
Two this semester.
James, have you had a chance to?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I, I'm taking one dual enrollment this semester, and I took one last semester.
That's excellent. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you, Dr. Hogan. I'm going to do a PTA update, but Katie doesn't seem to be here at the moment, so we'll either circle back to that, or we're going to run another meeting soon. So, we're going to go ahead with the preschool program presentation.
It's wonderful to see students at the end of their journey, whether it's the Engineering Club, or the Latin Club, or the Art Show, which was very impressive, but tonight, I and Principal Farady and Rachel Cotter will take you to the beginning of the journey of students, which is preschool. So, this is a picture of some of our current students. And I think as part of the background, it's important to understand that preschool is mandated in Massachusetts for students ages three, beginning at age three, for students who have disabilities. It is not a regular education program, it is a special education program. And the purpose of this is to ensure that programs and services are designed to meet the unique needs that enable students with disabilities to make progress in acquiring knowledge and skills, improving social relationships, and learning to take action to meet their needs within the general education program. So, that's the goal from the beginning. And a young child who is deemed eligible for special education services needs to receive these services in the least restrictive environment. Now, that can actually include his or her home. It could include a childcare setting, such as a Head Start setting, or a private preschool, or it can also be in a public school, such as we have here in Littleton. This is all determined by the child's individual educational plan. And special education services are provided at no cost to the family. This does not mean it's the same thing as the program costs that we bear, but special education services at any age level are always at no cost to the family. So, some families in our town opt to just bring their children in just for the services. It could be occupational therapy, physical therapy, or speech and language. But we also offer four classrooms at Shaker Lane. Now, there are different models that the state sets up for preschool programs, so I'll just go briefly into those. One is an inclusionary model, and this integrates students with and without disabilities, and we have to abide by certain mandated class sizes. For example, a class size cannot exceed 20 students if there is one teacher and one aide, and that only allows us to have five or six students with IEPs in a classroom of that size. If the number of students with disabilities increases to be six or seven, and we would have to know this at the beginning of the year because we can't reduce a class size once we get into the year, then the class size can't exceed 15 students, and again, that is with one teacher and one aide. Now, that's an inclusionary model, and that's the model we strive for here in Littleton. But there is another model of a substantially separate program, and this primarily will serve children with disabilities. And here, you'd have 50% of the children with disabilities, and the class size is limited to nine students and one teacher and one aide. It's also, I think, important to understand that preschool teachers are different than what we expect of teachers at other grade levels. A preschool teacher is the one who delivers the special education services. At all other grade levels, we have general education teachers, and then special education teachers come in to deliver the special education services. So, from the time that I started here in Littleton, I've been really interested in our preschool. And if you remember, as a school committee, during my first year, during 2013-14, the school committee supported an outside evaluation with Walker Associates, and so we've used that initially as a model, but there certainly has been a lot of discussion and a lot of growth since then, and a lot of that has been led by Principal Farady and Rachel Cotter, who's our new administrator this year, who coordinates a lot of our special, our early childhood programs. So, I'm going to let them tell you where we have come in this time. Okay, thank you.
So, I'm going to continue to talk a little bit about the current preschool, excuse me, preschool model. As Rita said, at Shaker Lane, all of our programs are inclusionary models, which means their classrooms consist of students who are, have been found eligible for special education services and for, and typical students. I still always have to put those quotes around typical students because in 45 years, I don't think I've figured out what a typical student is. The parents of typical students do pay tuition to come to our preschool programs. As Rita said, right now, we have four classrooms in our current configuration, but we have six, six different programs because two of our programs are half-day programs, so some students come in the morning, some students come in the afternoon. In addition to those classroom teachers, we also have a special education teacher currently who supports all six of those programs. So, our teaching staff right now consists of 3.4 classroom teachers and a .8 special education teacher, which totals 4.2 full-time equivalency of staff. Next slide, thank you. So, this year, all of our programs are mixed ages, and we've been doing that for two years now. Our three-day and four-day programs, as I said, are offered in both the morning and the afternoon, and our class sizes, we have two half-day, and I know this is a little, I'm going to say exactly what's on the slide. We have two half-day, three-day classes that are mixed ages, and those classes run for two and a half hours a day. We strive to start with 10 students in those classrooms, and we cap them at 12 to 14, even though we can go up to 15 students, and we have six IEP students in those classrooms. We also have two half-day, four-day classes that are mixed ages, which also run for two and a half hours. We start with 12 to 14 students in those classes, and we try to cap at 15 with seven IEP students. And then we have two full-day, five-day classes. By full-day, five-day classes, I mean, they run for five- six different programs because two of our programs are half-day programs. So, some students come in the morning, some students come in the afternoon. In addition to those classroom teachers, we also have a special education teacher currently who supports all six of those programs. So, our teaching staff right now consists of 3.4 classroom teachers and a .8 special education teacher, which totals 4.2 full-time equivalency of staff. Next slide, thank you. So, this year, all of our programs are mixed ages, and we've been doing that for two years now. Our three-day and four-day programs, as I said, are offered in both the morning and the afternoon. And our class sizes, we have two half-day, and I know this is a little, I'm gonna say exactly what's on the slide. We have two half-day, three-day classes that are mixed ages, and those classes run for two and a half hours a day. We strive to start with 10 students in those classrooms, and we cap them at 12 to 14, even though we can go up to 15 students. And we have six IEP students in those classrooms. We also have two half-day, four-day classes that are mixed ages, which also run for two and a half hours. We start with 12 to 14 students in those classes, and we try to cap at 15 with seven IEP students. And then we have two full-day, five-day classes. By full-day, five-day classes, I mean, they run for five and a half hours. They don't go the full six and a half hours that our other students go. And they're also mixed age. We tend to start those classes with 12 students, five of which are usually on IEPs, and we try to cap those at 15. Now, addition, in addition to the professional teachers that are in there, as Rita mentioned, we also have a cadre of teaching assistants that work with students in the programs as well. Now, as with anything, sometimes you exhibit challenges with what you currently have. And one of the things that I've always said about Shaker Lane and the Shaker Lane staff is their vision, their willingness, and the enthusiasm which they embrace new ways of doing things. So, we're at a point right now where we spent some time this year looking to see if there was a better way that we can continue to provide quality services for our students in a model that might be even better. And Rachel, I'd like to introduce to you Rachel Cotter, who is our VCEVA administrator and has also been coordinating the preschool programs and has worked really, really hard with the preschool staff in helping them to see that maybe there's more one way, more than one way of doing things. So, Rachel.
Alright, so as Rich was saying, some of the challenges with the current model that we have is that using a sped teacher to support those four classrooms is somewhat sort of the opposite of the way that really inclusive programs work. So, currently, our sped teacher will go into a classroom and remove a child to provide them more individual instruction in a separate environment. And this sort of has its limitations in the sense that, you know, they're not having access to their typical peers. The whole point of being in the inclusion classroom is to be around, you know, typical peers. So, that's definitely a problem. It also serves a problem in the sense that a lot of the times, removing them from their classroom setting that they're used to being in and pulling them to a different environment. So, for some of our students, they have a hard time then taking those skills and bringing them back to the classroom. So, those, that's sort of the major challenge with the current model. The also, also the problem with it is that it, the data that's collected during these times where they're outside of the classroom is really the basis that they use for writing partnership for its current performances for IEPs, ultimately writing goals and objectives, and choosing services for the following year. And oftentimes, the performance of a kid outside of the classroom looks different than what it looks like within the classroom setting, some for better, some for worse. But, you know, it really puts the sped teacher in a position where she needs to really write goals and objectives for what she sees sort of outside of their natural learning environment, which really doesn't make a lot of sense. So, that's one of the major challenges we have at this point. Also, when you look at the schedule, you know, being new to the district, I've worked in a couple districts before, kind of came in and was ready to schedule my meetings and realized, wow, my staff has no time. They have, they are, they have kids from the morning to the afternoon, and it really, it makes it very difficult for scheduling meetings because what I have to do is I have to hire a sub. I have to have a sub come into the classroom to remove, to remove the teacher. Or I have to schedule it sort of outside the school day, which can be very challenging for families. We try to do meetings at eight in the morning, and families say to me, my kid's not in preschool yet. How can I come to a meeting? So, that's one of the major problems that we have. Also, something I noticed within my first few weeks of work is that the half-day program teachers dismissals at 11:30, and dismissal really never, when it's, when it's a preschool pickup type of dismissal, it really isn't at 11:30. So, the teachers are really outside or in the lobby dismissing students for a good 10 to 15 minutes, which causes them to eat their lunch as they're running to go and get the next group of kids. So, that was something we wanted to keep in mind of kind of when we're looking at fixing the program for next year. Also, something that the staff brought up to me, which is a really good point, is that for those half-day classes, the half-day teachers expressed to me, and I could completely understand this, that when you mix eight, when you have a mixed-age classroom for really young children, it can be very challenging for the teachers. So, some of our programs might have a kid who, you know, missed the cutoff in kindergarten by five days, right? So, they're, they're five years old September 5th. And then another student turns three on September 6th and joins that classroom. So, there's some major challenges with that. In that shorter day, you definitely can do mixed ages in a longer timeframe, but it's really difficult for those teachers to, to meet the needs of all those kids in that short amount of time. So, some of the changes that we've made in the model proposal for next year is, you know, taking, thinking about those changes in combination with the report that was done a couple years ago, I started to do some research. So, I'm part of an early childhood group that meets monthly with all the other districts in our collaborative, you know, Acton, Foxborough, Conca, Kaila, Slidbury. I had some contacts in Westford. I kind of expanded the model a little bit, just to sort of see like what other high-performing districts do for their preschool model. And it was very consistent that the model that we were using is very outdated in the sense that all other districts see their classroom teachers, their preschool teachers as a classroom teacher and a special needs teacher because by nature, our preschool classrooms are integrated, their children with or without disabilities mixed together. So, taking that, you know, into consideration, we sat with the team. We really talked a lot. We did a lot of work with making them part of the process and having them express, tell us what would work best really for next year. So, if you look up the slide here, the net, the model for next year, sticking to that same idea, we'll still have four classrooms with six programs. We are gonna have the same type of model. So, we're having a three-day, half-day program and a four-day, half-day program, and then as well, keeping the two five-day programs. But what we did in this model is that we kept the three-year-olds in the morning and moved the four-year-olds to the afternoon. And what that did was one of two things. One, it offered the four-year-olds four days of preschool, which gets them closer to sort of what their model will be for kindergarten. And it also, you know, you have to really take in consideration nap times, right? So, most three-year-olds nap, and we really have a, have a challenge to fill a three-year-old afternoon program because they're usually napping. So, and that, what I also did was if we kept it that way, we would have a common planning time on Thursday mornings for those students to, for those staff to be able to have their meetings. The five-day said that they were fine keeping it mixed age because they have, they have a lot more time to kind of differentiate instruction. So, that being said, in order to change one of the classrooms from a three-day model to a four, we had to increase one of the staff member, propose increasing one staff member by one day and assistant by a day as well. But if you think about it, we're reconfiguring the class teacher, classroom teacher's responsibilities. So, we're actually alleviating the need to have the outside special ed teacher because the teachers will be serving both roles. So, although it's an increase of .4 essentially teacher and assistant, you're actually dissolving the need to have a full-time outside special ed teacher. So, you end up breaking even. So, some of the other things, so the class time, we did a little bit of change there as well. So, we incorporated another problem that we're having with that five-day program as they didn't have any consistent planning time either. So, we ended up proposing a model change there. So, the five-day program's gonna run nine to 2:45, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And on Wednesdays, we're gonna keep that a half-day every week. It ends up being 13 half-days anyways for the school. So, it really was just, you know, the addition of those other 27 half-days. And that will allow my five-day teachers to have a consistent planning time and meeting time as well, which is helpful for me. And then the four-day program, to alleviate the problem that we are having with lunch, we alternated the four-day program just 15 minutes later. So, that way, the morning program dismisses at 11:30, and then they have 45 minutes. So, when dismissal carries over an extra 15, they're still able to have lunch before moving on to the, to the next class. So, you know, in thinking about the changes that we, that we needed for that common planning time, when we're asking the staff to do a different role, we need to allow them a little bit of time to be able to do that. So, both previously, the sped teacher would be writing the IEPs for the teachers. Now, we're asking the sped teachers, the classroom teachers should be writing them themselves. So, that extra half, half-day, you know, a week gives them time for IEP writing, also for participating in IEP meetings. It gives me a nice time to do some trainings and to work on, so they can work on writing their progress reports, making data sheets, tracking data, and all the other kind of duties that come along with being a liaison that they didn't previously have. We also did, to cover the five-day program, we ended up, so because we took away with that half-day Wednesday, not all of the Wednesdays used to be half-day, now they are. So, we were sort of losing about two and a half hours a week from the program. So, what we did was we moved the end time of that, of the five-day program an extra 15 minutes. So, that way, they all dismiss at once, and it ended up, we ended up getting an extra hour for that, which, which I think gets us closer. So, we went from 27.5 hours down to 25.5. So, they're not losing as much. And there really wasn't any major change, change to the cap size. And it's one thing that I have been commended for a couple times in the past few months, is that we are known for small class sizes. Many times, we'll leave an IEP meeting and the early intervention staff says, what do you mean? There's only nine kids to start the year. And I said, well, the three-year-old program's our feeder program. That's the one, if a kid turns three in September or June or whenever it is, I put them in the program. They start when they're three. So, we have to have that flexibility. So, we try to start low. So, when you look at originally, it seems like the numbers are low, but by the end of the year, we're usually to capacity, and we're usually where we need to be with our IEP numbers. So, those are the changes.
Do you have a question for us?
Yes.
Rachel is a special education teacher. I'm very impressed with what you've done. I know that, you know, getting kids to, in the least restrictive environment and having the planning time is gonna be so important. And I know in my district, it's always a challenge getting, you know, paraprofessionals trained. And there's just really no time to talk for a lot of the teachers and support staff. And that you can do trainings, I mean, it's fabulous. I really can't wait to see how it turns out. I think it'll be really good.
You know, and I know that there was another comment about there being changes every year. It seems like there's more changes to the preschool program. But, you know, we're here to serve the students who are eligible. So, at this point, we don't, we haven't integrated a model because that's the type of students we have. You have no idea who's coming in the door. So, as the children come in, the program model might have to change. And that's sort of something that the community needs to sort of understand, that although it might not meet every child's needs, you know, all the student in the community, we really have to make programming appropriately for their, for the children's needs. At this point, we don't have a substantially separate program. We don't have an autism program. We really teach our kids in the least restrictive environment. But that's also because those are the type of kids we have. So, moving forward, that model might need to change if different children come, come, come on from EI.
A question about moving it so they have the time to spend doing paperwork. Does this alleviate the paperwork problem I've heard of over and over about, you know, teachers just filling out paperwork for new IEPs and all that?
Yes, yes, definitely. You know, to, to ask them to participate in a meeting and then spend time to write the IEP, we need to allow them time to do that.
Yeah.
And although special ed teachers in Littleton don't necessarily get that time allowed, they also don't run a classroom all day. So, it's a little, you know, when you run a learning center, you get the children, you bring them in, and then you bring them back. That's the model that you use in the older grades. So, it, they don't, they don't need the time as much because they can enter their classrooms where, as you know, if someone's always in a meeting, she's not teaching the class. So, hopefully it will help with the paperwork.
Mike?
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna roll out Matt's my, the expert.
We know we can never help with the paperwork right now. There's no way to get around that.
As far as, that's one of the things, is I think just having that time because especially at the lower levels, there's no prep time built into these teacher schedules. So, I mean, just having that time to meet is huge.
Yeah, just one question on the class sizes and things there. If the, and the participation, the, it looks like it's like 50% of the students, you cap it at 50% for the IEP students there?
In order to keep within ratio. It actually has to be under 50%.
That's what I mean. That's why I was thinking is, is it has to be under 50% in a classroom. So, how do we typically make up the rest of the classroom? Is that parents looking for early ed, education programs?
Yes. And actually, just to speak to that a little bit, we had a huge turnout this year, and I don't know if it's consistent with maybe what we saw in kindergarten. When we, when we looked at the spots we had, we had about 30 spots available, and we had, I think it was over 50 applicants for those spots. And I was actually interested in other districts. When I'm in my early childhood, they search for typical peers to fill their programs.
Well, that's why I was wondering.
And we're actually, we have more peers than we, than we can even accept. Yeah.
Okay. So, we don't have a problem making sure that we meet the maximum percentages there?
No, not at all.
But we are facing the problem. We have to decline certain parents, the ability to participate in the program.
Yes, which has its challenges. I think one of the deficits that Littleton has, being such a small community, is they really don't have a lot of, a lot of other preschool options in town. So, as far as I'm aware, the only other school that they could go to is the Learning Experience, which is more of a sort of a daycare preschool model. And a lot of parents are really just looking for the typical preschool, that little half-day model, and there is not a lot of options. That's the only option in Littleton, where if you go to a town like Westford, there's multiple different preschools you could go to. So, you don't have to access your public school if you, if you're not able to get into it. And most of the families who weren't able to get into it went outside. Most of them were either going to Acton or for, to Westford for preschool.
Okay, thank you. Matt brought up a good point. It would be great to get an update next spring after we've gone through a whole year of the new implementation and see hopefully what, you know, positive news, but also to hear what the tweaks might be as you have evaluated it and see where we're going. So, that would be great if we could just make sure we get that.
Sure. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
This is a, this is a process that just didn't happen overnight. Three years ago, we brought in a consulting firm to do a review of our preschool program. And that gave us an opportunity to take that document and take a look around at other districts. And then we identified districts that were high-performing districts and had staff start taking a look at those alternative models. And then we brought Rachel on at the beginning of this year, and we were ready to move forward. Rachel's done a fantastic job of taking the best of everything we found and converting it to what suits our needs. And most importantly, suits the students' needs that the program is designed for. So, as superintendent, I'm really excited about this. I'm glad we're at that point, but we're implementing it for next year. Change always takes time, and we want, we want to make sure that we get it right before we jump into something like this. So, most certainly, we'll come back next spring and give everybody an update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I do want to say in closing that I think Rachel has done a wonderful job. She's really provided leadership to the preschool. But also, I need to commend the preschool teachers because the four of them really sat together and really had their vision about what they needed. And it really was listening to them because they do understand what makes their program work. So, again, we have wonderful teachers, and I, we should be very pleased that your children come and have a wonderful experience in the preschool.
Alright.
We're midway through our strategic plan. And we feel it's a pivotal point in time to review where we're at. So, in order to do this, typically, next meeting, you get an update on our SIP plans that are linked to our strategic plan. We're, we're gonna do an update on what we're doing, but in order to be true to the process of reviewing the strategic plan, we don't want to move ahead and start planning for the next two-year cycle. So, we'll be bringing that back in the fall. But what we want to do is start with our leadership team in the summer and our curriculum coordinators, review our current strategic plan, take a look at our successes, and take a look at whether we need to change any of our focus areas, delete any, add any. And there are two that we would consider adding. Then we want to bring, bring that plan to our leadership teams at the school level, our student, our teacher, our parent councils in the schools, and our staff. And we want them to take a look at it as well. That will allow us to continue to move forward in a methodical manner. And having done strategic planning since the late 80s, I found out very quickly that if you don't take the time to review these plans mid-cycle, if you're not careful, they lose visibility. And so, we want to make sure that it truly is the pillar or the foundation of what we're doing in our district. That accompanied by our schematic of meaningful interconnections, together it really gives our teachers a solid foundation and direction in terms of where we're going. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Hard to believe we're already midway through. I mean, time went very, very fast. So, any comments on that?
Please have a question. Do you, what's gonna, what's your plan for this group's involvement in?
This group here? We bring it back and present it and also ask for your involvement. It's, it's interesting when you, you look at strategic planning, systems that are, I'm gonna say on the cusp of figuring out what strategic plan, plans actually mean, really look to the superintendent to have this visionary plan. Well, that's fine. But in order for a plan to really make a difference and permeate a culture of an organization, it needs to be shared. There needs to be ownership, not only at the superintendent level, the leadership level, at the teacher level, the community level, and at the school committee level. We talk about being a team. This is, and I'm gonna... We talk about being a team, and this is, and I'm going to cross over from MASC when they look at functions of the school committee. I really feel it's important that school committees are involved in the strategic planning process. I mean, that really is a roadmap for, for all of us, and it has implications for funding. It really determines the actualization of our vision for the district, so that will be part of the process as well.
Yeah, I was going to, really, you took the words right out of my mouth, that it's really one of the most important things that we can do as a school, you know, that we are obligated to do. So looking forward to, you know, having that coming for us.
All right. So next meeting, you'll have some updates, and every year, we also bring in a handbook revisions that we have, so we'll do that at the next meeting as well.
All right, we're at the second phase of the meeting, where are there any interested citizens that would like to speak before the school committee? All right, seeing none, we'll jump into our subcommittee reports, PMBC.
Yeah, let's see. Formal groundbreaking for Alumni Field is going to be Saturday at 9:00 AM. I don't know what kind of public arrangements are being made.
So there'll be, there'll be, you know, different youth groups and varsity teams that'll be there representing, however, I can't be there, I'm going to be in Providence at basketball tournaments.
I'll, I'll probably be there, yeah.
Obviously, anybody else is welcome, but I wouldn't be there.
I'll be there as part of PMBC.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we have some representation there.
I'll be there from school.
There. And then the other thing I would like to, PMBC is being asked to start helping get the five-year facility capital projections taken care of and planned, of which I'll need, you know, want to start getting the school department's inputs there, particularly, you know, making sure we're comprehensive across all the buildings there. But I'd also like to maybe tie that into where we want to go with our out-year budget projections too, because I'd like us to maybe try to make a concerted effort here to, so maybe, you know, maybe by October 1st, be able to give the town what our projections are, rather than waiting for just the, whatever pops out of the calculation.
We're talking about capital.
Yeah, and if we could do a budget projection there, you know, because like in the past, we've always gotten, it's not, I should wait till budget to talk about that, but you're next. You know, typically, I think the town, Bonnie, you know, takes the steps and lanes calculation and then Ford projects that, but that's not all that's usually encompassed in what we need for out-year budget. So I'd like us to maybe see if we could be a little bit more proactive this year on, on trying to, to get ahead of that process a little bit. I know it's going to up some of the things there, and it will be a preliminary estimate, but I think trying to get ahead of that would be beneficial to the schools.
I, I agree, I, you know, I think that getting it out sooner rather than later, albeit with the caveats that it could change, the farther out you go, the more likely it is that it will change, which is fine. But that is something that we have not done in terms of going out more than one year. You know, sometimes we'll go out earlier with what we think is going to happen in a given year, but you're right, we can conceivably do that.
My, my concern on that is, you know, with, and it relates to the capital side also, is we got a lot of projects coming online, there's the flatness in the, in the town budgets as well as their new growth projections. So trying to make sure that we have the placeholders out there, I think will help minimize the surprises.
It, it also makes sure that we, we don't make promises that we end up, on the capital side, that we can't keep because we didn't anticipate what was going to happen on the operational side. I think that's important, you know, we can start to weigh them, and, you know, they'll all have probabilities on them, but that's fine.
And then if there's any education initiatives that we're planning, we, again, I think it's important for us to get the placeholders to see how that's going to float in, in the out-years.
Well, that lends, lends me right into the, to the budget subcommittee update. So as part of that, next week, or, excuse me, next meeting, two weeks, we will talk about the vision budgeting. Can, is that documented? Can you release that to us so that we can?
It already is, Bill, I'll do it again.
Yeah, no, thank you.
And, um, you're getting an email tomorrow?
Yes.
So I would ask that we all take a good look at that and be ready to have a discussion on it. And then to Darryl's point, some of the budget visioning, not all of it, but some of it will inform what you just talked about in terms of us being out, look out a couple of years ahead of time, you know, we can put priorities on it and likelihoods that, you know, what we think we, we want to do versus what we think we're going to have to do.
Right. Now, this, this document was, was designed as an internal document that doesn't capture recurring costs, so it's a planning document, so when you look at it, please keep that in mind, it's not our, our total projected.
Correct, that's, that's a very good point. It's a visioning document, it's, it's an idea to look at things we might not otherwise ordinarily look at as part of an annual budget review cycle. You know, so that needs to be in the forefront of everybody's mind.
Right, that, that's what I mean, and then us turning it into a budget projection, because even what we're talking about for the full-day, the tuition reduction in the full-day kindergarten has out-year budget ramifications, that we need to start rolling those forward.
And this, this next year, obviously, has, has gone through the litmus test, but I deliberately don't do that to, to the other years until we're in that year. So don't think that we've endorsed everything that, that's there, although I have to say we're, we're very cognizant of affordability, so we, we have that in mind when we were designing the five-year plan. But we will start that process of next year's budget once we, or FY '19, so to speak. When we're ready to do that, then we'll start chipping away.
All right, Policy Subcommittee, Jen, have you done anything yet? No? Okay, that's fine. Do we have any other business? I would like an executive session. We'll get Jen caught up on the LEA negotiations along with everybody else. We've, we've had some meetings where there's some, some proposals that have gone back and forth, so I think it's a good time to get it updated. All right, so entertain a motion.
Motion to move into executive session for the purpose of contract negotiations with no intention to return to open session.
Second.
All right, motion being second, and this is a roll call vote, Matt?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Darryl?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody.